Directors, this afternoon, we will be focusing on our board development goals and board governance. And so, we have our, the results of our board self-assessment surveys that each of us took. Included in the data is the survey, or the survey results also dating all the way back to 2014. So, we can compare data from our most recently taken survey, just in this last couple of months, depending on where you, when you took it. And when I was looking over this, I was focusing mostly on comparing this year and last year, since we have the same board for those two self-assessments. But, the purpose of going over this data is to create goals for our self-improvement as a board. And so, I know that we all just got this data. I have a little bit of an advantage, because I got it about an hour and a half ago. And I have some preliminary noticings and just what I found, but if we want to take a minute and just look it over, and then we can take our discussion from there. Does that sound good to everybody?
It's fine.
I don't know how else to do this. Show me with your fingers how many more minutes you need.
Okay. Too many questions.
It's a lot to go through.
It is.
I can go over what I noticed. Standard one, we are overall rating ourselves higher than last year. And standard two, we are overall rating ourselves lower with a three times as much higher percentage of some of the time. So, we went from all the time to most of the time, to some of the time with a three, like a 300% more often rating. Standard three was the always from compared to 2022, sorry, 2024 to 2025, was we marked ourselves as always at half of the rate as we did last year. So, we also had a larger percentage of most of the time as compared to the sum of the time, or the always from last year. And then, standard four was about the same as last year, and standard five was two times the amount of some of the time. But, I went through and identified the questions that really had the discrepancies in the data, where there was a big discrepancy in how we scored ourselves last year to how we did this year, where it went significantly lower. But, just going from standard two, three, and five, do we want to take a look through those? And I can let you know those questions. In standard two, and we could take a look at the questions that, is that okay with everybody, if we focus on that data, since we're focusing on board improvement goals? Okay. So, on standard two, on question 24, I'll just, I'll just read the question numbers, and then we can look through the data. Question 24, question 30, and question 31. Question 35, and question 36. And standard three, question 38, question 40, question 41, question 43, and question 45, question 47, question 48, question 49, and question 50. And in standard five, question 69, question 71, and question 72.
What are the questions for standard two again?
So, what did you, yeah.
The questions for standard two were 24, 30, 31, 35, and 36.
And standard five?
69, 71, and 72. And the questions that I did not mark down were those that were the same or better, where we scored the same or better than last year.
So, you, so all of these were just based on what we scored last year, not based on if we were scoring well or not well?
These are significantly lower than last year.
Okay. 69 wasn't significantly lower than last year. It is higher.
You were right.
Do you have what we had for goals for last year? I think now it might be a good time to just go through those.
Goal number one was to complete the implementation of the superintendent evaluation with Dr. Osberry, which we did. Goal number two was to maximize WASTA offerings to collaborate with peers at a regional and state level. Goal number three was to set annual goals every year for the board, which we're doing right now. And goal number four was to incorporate educating the public around the board's and superintendent's role using our regular mechanisms of communication, which really aligns to one of these standards. I think standard three. And maybe standard two, also, with policies.
Did she say 31 on standard two?
Yeah, it was.
That was 31. That's interesting.
Yeah, that went from the two of us saying most of the time, to two of us saying some of the time.
I think one of our goals that needs to be to reduce spending. And the next year, find a way to reduce. I don't know that that covers any of these.
Well, there is a whole section on budgets. That was standard five, and the questions 71 and 72. So, question 71 was to seek community and staff input in this decision-making to gain community and staff report. Or I guess, I guess the budgeting ones were that standard? Nope, that's standard three. And a lot of our questions were, well, question 40 was adopt a budget that supports quality staff development and resources for curriculum implementation. If I remember correctly, that one was, that went from all five of us last year saying always, to down two of us this year saying always, and three of us saying most of the time. And then, question 47 is keep the community informed about the district's financial status. 48 was seeking public input during the budget process. And then, 49 was provide guidelines for budget development, including a clearly agreed expectation for a reasonable ending fund balance, which is very pertinent right now. And then, 50, adopt a fiscally responsible annual budget that is aligned with the district's vision and plan. So, those are all questions that where the data did go more towards the lower down, which is understandable considering our, our budget status right now, and why some of us would feel that way.
Well, it's definitely a fluid situation, because of the situation that we're in right now.
What was it about the, because in question 47, and keeping the community informed about the district's financial status, and question 48, seeking public input, I'm just wondering, what was it that changed from this year to last, from last year to this year, where all five of us believed that last year, we sought public input about the budget, and one of us didn't know, one of us was some of the time, and one of us said most of the time? And then, question 47, four of us believe that we were always keeping the community informed, and this year, three of us don't believe that. So, I wonder if it's just the status of our budget, or is there, do we feel like we're not being transparent, or getting enough public input about the budget?
Honestly, I don't remember what I selected, but if I was to say anything based on, you know, just by looking at this, that, yeah, we, based on the situation that we're in now, probably don't feel like, I mean, I as a community member, looking in on the situation now, probably don't feel like, and I've heard this from a lot of constituents too, that they don't really understand the, the school budget process, like what, what the budget is, or how it works, even though I think we've, we've even probably discussed it in our meetings, but, and so, they just hear, you know, what they, what they hear. So, maybe we can do that. That's all I'm saying. I don't know, I don't remember what exactly I selected. And then, seeking public input, I doubt, that's an interesting one, because I, I had to think about that.
You know, I just think we find ourselves in a different place than we were a year ago.
We're all just feeling more negatively about our budget outlook, and that caused us to score ourselves lower?
Well, I understand we just lost $4 million. That we, and we just planned our last budget.
And I don't know about you, but I, I mean, I get questions all the time about, not just what's going on in our district, but other districts too, from, from community members. So, it probably weighs heavily on our, our minds.
So, yeah. I visited with the budget, I forgot his name.
Joey?
Joey. I visited with Joey yesterday. And, because I wasn't sure, because he'd heard federal government issues and stuff, and sure enough, we basically amounted to about $4 million that, that part of it's staffing, part of it's everything else, but they picked on certain specific items, and so that we have to try to adjust and fill in. And, so, it, it has changed our situation, and then, as I understand it, also, visiting with him, we can't adjust, since we've offered the teachers at this point contracts, we can't go back on those contracts. So, that means we're stuck with the majority of our budget, even though we now have less money to do it on. And so, if we want to reduce it next year, we got to start early, and then we've also got to think about our levy, and how we're going to approach all this, as we talk about our financial issues in the public. So, exactly, you know, how, how do we approach it? And I, I think also, personally, how hard we hit next year's budget is going to be significantly affected more because of this $4 million. And the way I feel like it should be approached next year, I think we're going to have to probably do some significant changes. And, and we don't know, I don't know, we hope all the cuts have come, but I don't know that we do know that that's the case.
Those funds were withheld unexpectedly. We were expecting those funds in July, and it was a surprise to the entire nation. So, yes, school districts across the nation are scrambling to figure out what they're going to do, and with so much of that, of our percentage of our budget being federally funded, it's, it's a tough situation to be in. So, I don't know, as a, as a board goal, we, we don't feel that, our board doesn't feel, according to the survey, that we are being transparent or seeking enough public input. Is there a goal that we want to make around that in the budget? Because it seems like we have a budget hearing every time we make a change to the budget, or adopt the annual budget. We have had multiple reports on the budget, and we have been very transparent with the, our, our fund balance, and what, what we're going to be, what we're doing with the fund balance, and that we dipped into it to be able to not have to do any layoffs with the situation that we're in. So, are there any ideas about how we could be, be better around the budget?
Well, again, like I said, with the levy situation, I think that this discussion is going to lead that into it, as we go into the situation with our levy. And to explain to them, I think we need to pick it up, because, explain to them, what's the situation if we don't get the levy, and what the significance of that's going to be, which is going to be huge.
Right.
And so, I think the communications, just because of the levy, and our financial situation, that we do need to spend more time this next year, addressing this, not that I'm saying we did a bad job last year, I just think that this is a year that we're going to have to communicate more.
This is the thing, though, with that question. Keep the community informed about the district's financial status. Two people put always, one person put most of the time. So, the majority of the board on, at this level, to me, has faith that we keep the community informed of the district's financial status. I personally don't know what we could do more in this. I don't want to make a poll around this one. We have had so many budget meetings, public budget meetings. I have absolutely loved what we have done going out to the schools, and letting the teachers know as we go one, as we, as we know what is going on, one step after another, after another. I think that's critical. I, I just don't think we should spend our time on anything. You know, there's several of these questions that the majority of the board feels like we're doing okay with. You know, there's enough questions, but I, I almost feel like we should focus on the ones where the majority of the board is some of the time, or none of the time, because that, to me, signals that there's an issue. I don't know. That's my opinion.
But I think that Director Norberg makes a good point, was we plan for the levy, and that wouldn't, because with our budget shortfall, it would be tempting to say that we could make up our funds with the levy, but we don't want to strain our taxpayers, and also want to keep the tax rate steady, so that we can pass it. So, that'll be something really important to remember as we head into levy planning, that we can't try to make up all of our lost funds through the levy, so that we can pass it, and to keep it palatable to the constituency.
Yes, and, and are we going to have the thought, oh, what was that? I know that's something we pay for extra, so I'm assuming it's going away, the, the survey, what's that one called? Thought exchange?
Thought exchange. Yeah, what, have that again?
No, because it's like a $30,000. It's expensive.
It's expensive, yeah. That would be a nice way to kind of get a thought process of the, of the, I mean, that's something we're going to have to be really, really conscientious on, is, is what we ask for in the levy. The last matter that we want is a failed levy.
Wasn't that, that was very instrumental last levy, wasn't it? That thought exchange?
It was really helpful in boundaries and.
Oh, that's what we, boundaries was the one.
Things.
Colors and, yeah.
Yes, yes. But right now, I understand you have to make cuts. But, question 15, on standard one, we had two reds and two yellows, and this might have something to do with our collective collaborating with colleagues across the region, state, or nation regarding, engaging, emerging trends, issues, and policy solutions. I think that one might, might, we didn't go to the, we didn't go to the ledge assembly this year, and I know it saved some money, so I don't think that's a terrible situation. But we did say we were going to have the senators and representatives to come here, so we could meet with them, and try to set up those appointments. I think that's an easy one, that we could make some goals around, and, and see if we can get some of those senators and representatives in. And I don't know how we do it in such a way that we can meet with them, and make it public, somehow announce it the day before, whatever, so that we could ask questions. I think that's one way to solve that problem, and, and help us stay connected with them, even if we choose not to go to ledge assembly next year, because we are in a tighter budget situation now than we were then. So, I'm anticipating we won't be going, or only a couple? I don't know. So, that's, that's one of my suggestions on 15.
And if we want to do that with the, with our state delegation, our state legislative delegation, that needs to happen before December, because during session, they're, they're packed, busy.
So busy.
This will be a short, a short session next year, so they'll be out by early March. So, if, schedule-wise, we can't make it work before December, then we could make it, we could do it in the spring of next year, for the following session, which will be a long session.
I think it's critical to do it before this next session.
Then we need to get them on the calendar before November, or before December, excuse me.
Is there a time that's better?
The earlier the better, because.
October would be a good time?
Yeah, because by mid-November, there's, they start caucus meetings and other planning meetings for the session. They're, they start, they, they go to Olympia for planning meetings, beginning in, they delay November, December, their pre-filing bills. So, yeah, September, October.
Are you thinking of having them come to a study session, to a board meeting to present, or having like a listening session with community members?
Those are all good.
They're all good ideas. I know we've done it before at schools, in classrooms. I know, you know, I, I think we just advertise the board's going to be there. Can't we do that ahead of time, so that we can?
Can we get town halls?
Have all five members of the board be there? I, I do think it's critical that we do that, and I do think it would help with that particular.
During a board meeting, or no, you're talking about a separate, a separate?
Generally, in the past, we've done those separately.
Separate.
I would recommend, I mean, it's hard to do that. I know, I know the working schedules make it really difficult, but I would, I would suggest early in the morning, or later in the afternoon.
And I would, I mean, even study sessions, right? Can we, we can use these study sessions, can we, is that possible? I mean, I'm just, that would be.
I just don't know how much community participation you have at 4:30.
Oh, I see.
It wouldn't be per community, per tip, per.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, not so much.
I guess what's, what's the board's intention for inviting them, right? I mean, and then that determines the mechanism. So, for example, the way I've participated in these in the past, is we've had certain issues or interests that we wanted to highlight.
Yep.
And so, we've invited them, for example, we wanted to highlight our overcrowding, so we would go and take them to schools. You know, we wanted to highlight our dual-language program, or, so, you know, we've typically invited them here, we've done kind of an overview, they've gone out and seen things, and then come back and kind of debrief that. It doesn't have to look like that, but that's what we've done in the past.
The legislature completely ignored us this last session. Completely ignored education. That really frustrated me. I shouldn't say completely. That was too broad. They largely ignored us. They ignored our largest problems. They tried to put a band-aid on a couple of things, but ignored our largest problems. I mean, right now, we are in a budget crisis, and it's all over the state of Washington, and the state of Washington needs to do something about it. So, there is one that I think needs to be brought up. And can they do anything? I don't know, but, but I think we need to work on it. And, and so, that's one that I feel strongly that we need to talk about. Going to get a new ledge rep, and all of the ledge rep stuff happens in September and October. So, it might be good to talk about it, to do these things in October. We could do it with the community, I, and, and see where that goes. We could also do, you know, the three tables, and so, we have two board members in each table, like we had three different legislators.
Like in a study session.
Like at a study session. So, that's another possibility. And, yeah, and I think it would. And, um, yeah, and I think it would be important to maybe even have the roles reversed where, where the board brings what we need to them and talk about what possibilities are and what we can do as a board to help some of those things come to pass. So that, that could be an idea there.
And we should, if we, if we're going to have an ask or many asks, we should have that clearly spelled out before the event.
Absolutely. And that could happen in a study session as well, that we can offer our asks. So I believe in September is the first of the ledge, I don't even know because I only served as ledge rep from December to now.
Well, I know WASA, not WASDA, but my professional organization has their legislative platform already defined for this next legislative session, I think.
Oh, wow.
Well, I'm pretty sure they do. I think I saw at least a draft, so I don't know if it's finalized. So, yeah, so I think the alphabet organizations, you know, WASDA, WASBO, WASDA are all working on that, so.
I think having our asks defined is pretty important because that's what we're going to want to explain to them.
Hasn't the budget been set for two years?
It's, it's by the end, yes.
Yeah, so there's not like a whole lot more that we can do in the next.
They could tweak it, but they won't, they won't pass a brand new.
I won't get millions of dollars.
When we're going so this high up and, and, you know, we've got to be coordinated with other boards and other people that are really going to expect to have impact at state level.
Yeah, that's why I'm recommending, you know, using legislative platforms from those organizations. So you have the collective kind of alignment. Yeah, there WASA is 26, 2026 legislative platforms already done. So it's focused on MSOCs, special ed, transportation. And, uh, a work group to, um, convene to review the adequacy of our current planning structure.
I think a lot of those are probably, like, I mean, I think it's important to also focus on what we as a district, specific to our district, because we're going to be talking to our representatives from our areas. So it's important that I think we also focus on what our district needs are as well, specific to our district. But I think a lot of those, what Superintendent Whitney just discussed, will probably, you know, pretty much be encompassed in all that too.
Yeah, I think that we could have discussed both our local as well as the state. But the more we can blend those off, the more likely we are going to have impact. So are we thinking, senators, state senators?
Yeah, they're the ones that would be able to affect any change at, in the state level for budgeting when we get the majority of our funds. But we do have three legis, we think we have four legislative districts here in Pasco School District. We could invite senators and house representatives from them and see who can come. And then just, um, that's what we could do. We could each take a, a table and meet with the 14th, the 16th, the 8th. And we still have some 12ths, right, in Pasco? No, no more 12ths?
It's just three districts.
Just the three.
8th, 14th and 16th.
Having just gone back to Washington DC for AASA for the, the National Superintendents, so I'm a liaison member from, one of the liaison members from Washington State to the National Superintendents Association. So I spent four days in Washington DC, the second week in July, paid for by them. Because we're on a, um, doing federal level legislative agency. And that's not a place that I've spent time building relationships with our federal legislators. And I, I think it's a missed opportunity. So I think we should think about that as we're thinking about. Like, I don't know them, they don't know me, um, you know, I, I just have not done a good job at the federal level.
Well, and we used to do a better job, but we just haven't had issues like this with the federal level. And it might be, you give us to spend a little extra money at this level so that we can, you know.
Well, and one of the federal, um, legis, congresspeople is new, so.
Boncard?
Mm-hmm.
From the, from the fifth CD?
So, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there.
I think that's a great idea.
I think some of the state and federal, the senators and representatives from the state, we know them, they've been here before. This isn't going to be an uncommon or, we haven't done it in a long time, but, um, our federal representatives, we haven't done it since I've been superintendent. Frankly, I don't remember before if we did.
We did send, um, we used to send a
You did, that's true.
Federal government every single year.
Yeah. And, um, yes, he used to come and present like in some of our Cidics classes periodically like that. I mean, not, wasn't, he wasn't here, you know, hearing the representative legislative or congressional, um, opinion, but he did engage with our students at Chilona at least, but he hasn't done that in a number of years. Uh, it might be worth thinking about the federal piece of it too.
I think we could get our house representatives from the fourth and fifth CD here. We can definitely invite them.
Certainly. And I think that's a great idea. And also, I think number 63 also spoke to that. That would knock both those out because 63 is already that all yellow, advocate the local, state and federal levels on behalf of students and district.
So you're currently the ledge rep and you're taking the vote for your ledge rep because the board wasn't there. So you just signaling a superintendent, then whoever, like, if you want me to start working with Amy, so get someone.
Are we, are we not doing that tonight?
It's not.
I thought it was. Oh, okay. I just misread it.
But, but are we, we can't do it since we didn't make it a ballot, like, so we can't do it tonight?
But you could do it on the 12th.
Okay.
And I think that's a really good idea. We need to get that done.
Is everybody planning to be here on the 12th?
Yes. I think it's important just that we get that ledge rep in place because that person will have an influence on all of us this year.
So we'll get a new ledge rep, identify on the 12th and then whoever that person is, I can start working with to get something. What I'm hearing people, I just want to be clear. So we'll get a new ledge rep elected. Then we're going to reach out to our people and do a study session with the tables.
That's, that was one option. That's the option everyone wants to do.
I think that's what's going to be most conducive to our schedules and to getting them here and other than having. I think the listening session would be the other option, but it would be more effective and we could get our point across better as a board and be unified in doing a study session and then have set our priorities, what we want to communicate and then be able to.
Now, if, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there. So playing out, you know, whatever day it is at 4:30, they're going to come to a study session. If there was interest from the board, from district staff during the day to like take them on a tour of new schools or highlight something, we could also do that. So, you know, think about if you would like us to. Now, they're always invited to our events, like at the living cuttings and that sort of thing. So, um, we could coordinate kind of a twofer, like, you know, see something with kids like during the day potentially and then come to the study session meeting with this board or something like that if you want.
I think that's great.
Okay, was there anything else from the?
Ooh, that was fun. Good job, guys.
The self-assessment survey that we wanted to talk about. Thank you for the, the positivity, Michelle. Much appreciated.
Did you go through and look at the ones specifically where there was a, like, where the board was not so much an impact severe? Did you go through those?
Yeah, I did. I went through the ones that weren't. This, this one bothers me a little bit. Not because we have three that say most of the time, but then we have two that say never. So, and that's number 36. I don't know if that's one. I think that's almost one that's going to be solved. It's just have files for evaluating staff, yeah, based on student success. And we are redoing the, um, we're redoing the district strategic plan and it, and it might cover some of this and that might cover it. I mean, this one isn't a great example because we have three that say most of the time. I think it just bothers me that we have two that say never on that one. I don't know if you even want to address that.
I think it really depends on, and this is just my opinion, I don't know, it's not my survey. Who are you talking about when you say staff? So, because it's certainly true for the superintendent in this last, you know, and then there are certain employee groups where we're not in direct control of that because it's negoti, like you, you know, so.
And that's interesting too, because I find that kind of confusing, like when I hear evaluating staff, like that's not what.
You do.
I don't do this for them.
So is it the staff you evaluate, which would be me?
See, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really understand the question. And there's a part of me that that question has always bothered me.
Yeah.
In that there's, uh, like this implied expectation that you're doing that. And it really, in terms of what's feasible for us as public education, it's really just, I think it's not going to be a feasible ask for us to integrate student data into an evaluation system for, I mean, it just doesn't.
And I know it's not a big discrepancy, but question, sorry, Michelle.
I'm sorry, I just, that question's always bothered me. It feels like an unreasonable ask. There's so many barriers that would be in the board's way of executing that question. I mean, there's not a district in Washington State that's doing that. I don't even think there is one in the country that's doing that.
So they don't, can I ask that question?
I feel like we are doing that. I feel like we are scheduling yours, superintendent, the evaluation.
If, yes, I agree with you. If, if you're defining staff as beyond the superintendent, like if you're defining staff as teachers, if you're, if you're defining staff as anything other than me.
But aren't we in the Charlotte Danielson model of, of?
Every teacher makes an improvement goal with students every year.
Yes, so aren't we evaluating them as students?
Principals are evaluating teachers.
Again, it depends on, so if, if what you're, it depends on how you're defining student success. So if you're, if you're defining it as teachers set a goal that X number of percentage of kids may grow and if they don't meet that goal, they're somehow, their evaluation, it's reflected in their evaluation. Like if that's the expectation, that is not happening and won't happen. They set a performance goal and they're, and teachers are evaluated on their ability to set the goal and, you know, pivot, pivot practice.
Because two of us said never. I mean, I, and again, I don't know how that was interpreted by the board members, but there, there is policy around, around teacher evaluation. And then that is, including that they will make a performance goal with their students. And so just because, just so that there is, if that was the reason that some people selected never, there is policy around evaluating teachers on student success.
So we have policy, we've set policy in our, in our policies as a board?
Yeah, every principal evaluates every teacher every year on a student improvement goal. We don't do that as a board.
Right, correct.
And we wouldn't oversee that as a board.
But we have policies that direct the superintendent to have procedures in place.
We would direct the superintendent to oversee that, yeah.
And I'm just hearing two different things here. She'll say, no, we don't, we can't. And you're saying that, yes, they do.
Again, depending on how you define it, often people that are looking at that question are looking for some kind of merit-based evaluation system. We should have someone exist. But it doesn't. And the complexity of implementing that is like, but to Amanda's point, if you, if what you're, if what she just described is how you're defining that question.
Making an, making a goal and picking a goal and not necessarily making it.
So to me, the question is ambiguous and frustrating. And leaves a wide interpretation.
I think we've done the best we can as a board by, by putting your evaluation with data. And so that puts more pressure on principals, it puts more pressure on the, on the teachers to, to help improve our school's performance. And, um, and I think we have shown that in our, in our ELA scores that have vastly improved this last, these last couple of years. So we have a lot of room for growth, but we have been.
As did our SBA scores this year, I suppose.
Great. So that's fantastic. Anyway, so.
I guess my point is the ambiguity in the question, in my opinion, is what influences the diver, the diverse, the diversity in the, it shows the polarization of the question in the ways.
So, um, Amanda, I, just looking at this, the ones that we, we either have some of the time, are only questions 62, 67, and 71. If, if you want to, I don't know if you want to go over.
We don't have, um, we have another topic to discuss before the end of our study session. And so we've, we've, we have a goal. One of our goals is to invite our state and federal elected representatives here to communicate with them about our needs here in Pasco School District. And then what were those questions again, Amy?
62, 67, and 71.
62 is regularly evaluate and adjust resources and strategies for closing achievement gaps to maximize their effectiveness. There's not a lot of variance from last year, really. There's one that says never and, uh, one more in the some, sometimes. And, and so, and then one less than most of the time.
No, there is, there are three, two some of the times and one never. So, I don't know. It just, it, it's one that qualifies for three or more of the board members, which is fine. I mean, honestly, what we're doing with those new strategic plan and, and tying those together, I mean, that could be one goal that would fit some of these other things too. Ensure the public is well informed. We already had a goal around that last year. And maybe what we need is a presentation on what we're doing to inform the public on our, the board roles and responsibilities. I don't know.
My curiosity is what do we feel that we're not communicating to the public?
Yeah, me too.
Specifically around the budget, is that what you?
No, around the question, that, the, on the, on the survey results that, what question was that, Amy?
That was on 67.
That on 67, ensure the public is well informed of the board's roles and responsibilities, that one of us said never, two of us said some of the time and two said all, two said most of the time, none of us said always. And so, um, that overall, we do not, none of us feel that we always ensure the public is well informed of the board's roles and responsibilities. But, um, and that's down from 2023. We had two always.
More discussion on what we.
I know.
What we do as a board.
And I'm, I'm fine with not doing one around that. So, I mean, I think it's good to take a poll right now because we have a lot of people who are like, no, we need to discuss that.
I think I scored, I put most of the time. And I just don't feel that the public is a lot of the times aware of the board's roles and responsibilities exactly. They think that we do like have a lot more overreach of individual, like actions in the, in the district when our role is to evaluate the superintendent and approve the budget. So, um.
No, but I think too, we have these, these are live. Anna puts out a thing every single week, every single board meeting and recaps what we've done in the board meeting. And, and I feel like.
That's what we've done. That's almost the role and responsibility.
Yeah, I think that's what it's talking about. We're talking about specifically what does the board do? I don't think people, because I, I get a lot of questions from people like, hey, I have this issue. And I'm like, that's not really a board's, like, I understand why you're coming to me because I'm your.
That's, that is true.
Yeah, that's.
Like, yes, we, almost every question we get from the public, we redirect to the proper channels because that's not what the board does. You're exactly right. Is there a way to educate the public in that? And is that a high priority considering the?
I don't think it's a high priority, but it's just.
I don't think that we have people coming to us on a weekly or daily basis, you know, with this kind of issue. So I don't see it as a, as something to make a goal around.
Yeah, does it? And we all agree with that?
I do and I don't. I, I don't know what I put on, I don't remember, but.
You know, if, if you put something into the newsletter that Teal had put out and said, this is the roles and responsibilities for the board.
We even have.
That wouldn't be hard to, to, to let the parents know through that mechanism, that somebody's going to have to write it up.
Or even add an educational.
Anna's sitting here. So there's a pretty clear outline on your board website that talks about the board is made up of five elected officials responsible for oversight and governance of the district's operation, including these areas, and it lists them, also approves the budget, here's the key functions of the board.
Who reads the website?
So I have a question. Could that be put into, like, an opening statement? Could that be put into, like, an opening statement at a board meeting?
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So I think we have text that would be easily integratable into when you send out the, the board report email. Anna, just add it to the top, you know, these five elected officials are honored to serve in this community, this is what they do. We have a fairly robust part of our ambassador's program already.
Yeah.
Is focused on the superintendent and the board's role. Um, and then Anna can add it to a newsletter, I'm looking at you, Anna, at the appropriate cadence, like when you feel like it's appropriate. Like, for example, um, maybe you do it every November when new board members are elected. You add it in the web, in the newsletter. This is what, you know, here are our new board members, or here are re-elected board members, here's what board members do, or something. Just pick a newsletter and annually, that's the newsletter. We also have, you are in the front of the calendar, our published calendar. I don't know, Anna, if that has some kind of, you know, statement about this is what board members do or something.
I would love, I, I really like that this is what board members do. I would really love a part that said, and this is what board members don't do. We don't hire and fire principals, that's a common one. You know, we don't, um, board members are not in charge of discipline issues in the schools. Anyway, things like that, you know, if there are, I, and I don't know how you could put that better because some discipline issues do escalate to the board, but they're generally, they're the ninety-nine percent of them, they are ninety-nine point nine percent of them, they are handled at the school level. So some, some of those are, at least with me, those are some of the more common questions I get. But, you know, like, we don't hire and fire teachers, we don't hire and fire principals, and we don't, um, and we, we don't deal with discipline at the school level.
WASTA may have some sample text, Anna, we can.
I do like having a non-persons because they'll see those purposes that inside still coming to us, but the little stuff.
Okay, to recap, we have a goal around, uh, collaborating with other elected officials across state and, or state and federal elected officials. We haven't identified a goal for anything else, though, just we're setting some, increasing, putting some things in newsletters and, is there any other, anything else that we want to set a goal around? Besides collaborating with, I think last year we had one to, uh, attend WASTA offerings and collaborate with other board members across the area. Maximize WASTA offerings to collaborate with peers at regional and state level. And then I think, um.
Not sure that's a good one, this year, we're, we're going to cut back on travel.
And that can also be like attending WASTA regional meetings.
There are, yeah, there are WASTA regional meetings, there are, anyone can attend a legislative, a WASTA legislative meeting. Uh, you don't have to be.
Are those always in person or is there a virtual option?
That's, it feels like they'd be virtual because, like, they're across the state, so.
I don't know what about.
I attended one in Prosser, but that was in person.
The Ledger meeting?
No, it wasn't.
Like a regional meeting? Yeah, they, we do have regional meetings, we're in District Eleven in WASTA. And all of us can attend those, we don't have to only go, we can be all five of us at the WASTA meetings.
I, I think one cue, critical one, because we're in such a budget crisis, to make sure that we're evaluating and adjusting resource stretch to use for closing achievement gaps and maximizing their effectiveness. I mean, I think our district already does that, but if we, I think it's important that we closely oversee that and I think the community would appreciate that we're making cuts as much as we possibly can away from the students. And that we are, you know.
Question number?
That's the question number sixty-two.
So be more transparent with the public on that?
You know, just be more, I don't know, transparent, if, if that is the word, or more deliberate with the public. About where our research is going, why we're making the decisions. I think we're already going to do that and I think it's a good goal to have, I don't know.
What would that look like for, uh, and I know this is what you, this is your job, Michelle, but I'm, I just need a little bit of, of clarity around, as a board, how would we, what would we do as a board if we set that as a board goal?
I think it would make budget presentations, I think it would, it would frame budget presentations to, to at least include a slide or two about how we are making cuts that are as far away from students as we can. We're not going, at this point, we have to make cuts that touch students. But we have made the vast majority of cuts up to this point that stay as far away from students, you know, core curriculum as we possibly can. And I think that it's important, I think making that a pointed goal will help the public know that we're using funds appropriately as we try to diverse this new difficult frontier. Because I, I mean, I think it's a way to be more transparent with the public and it's a way to show our public that we have the most important goal in mind, and that's our children.
So I think we could integrate it in with question forty-seven, would keep the community informed about the district's financial status. By, um, specifically with the budget cuts, how are they going to affect students?
That's a great idea, Amanda.
And I think if we can, I guess my thought to kind of go with that is if we can work in tandem with Michelle items and help support her in those areas that she has to make cuts in.
And then question sixty-two focuses on closing achievement gaps as well, and that is, I mean, that, those federal funds that were withheld specifically are for English language learning students and migrant students.
So you have any kid, any student who's below level.
And those were, those are where the biggest gaps exist. And, um.
That's great, that's a great goal, I would agree with that.
Which makes it all the more harder to.
We need one more board member that wants to make that a goal, though.
So can you, so what was that, can you say that one more time?
So that during our budget, um, our budget presentations to, um, be very clear about how, how the budget cuts set that are going to happen, how they're going to affect closing the achievement gaps and the effectiveness of, of, of instruction because we're having to cut resources.
So I'm going to just, you know, I always like, like pragmatically. So we would, in a budget presentation, for example, reference the elimination of migrant, migrant student program funds. We still have migrant students, they still have the same needs that they had before the federal funds were eliminated. So we would be saying, here's what happened with the elimination of those funds, here's how we're still serving those students. Or here's how we're still meeting their needs. These things were cut, but we're still supporting them.
I like that.
That's the angle that I would want to go on.
I just want to be.
Yes.
I think that's good.
And I think those, those are three great goals, I think they should be separate, too. I mean, I think those are three great, great goals.
Okay, I still am, although our budget is tight, I still want to try to attend WASTA events as, I think we have quarterly meetings for District Eleven, so, um, I would like to keep that as a goal.
Yeah, I know, we used to have better communication somehow, because I used to go to those all the time, I just don't hear about them. So I don't know where, where it's different. It's the president in our area that usually sends those out, I don't know where that's different.
Yeah, it's Rick, isn't it, from Richland? He's the president of our area, or is it Jill? Is it Jill?
I don't really. But I just, I just haven't been.
It's Jill.
I think there's a board turnover and we just kind of.
Okay, so we have our budget goal and we have the WASTA, is everyone okay with having the WASTA goal? And then we have our, um, collaborate with state and federal elected officials goal. And then to continue to set annual board goals. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, we have one more item to discuss and that's our, um, our WASTA conference this November and.
So the caterer had a kitchen fire, so they worried about not bringing food, so Jenny running out to get something, so she said, keep them talking.
Okay, well then, serendipity.
And we, the budget's low, so we don't even have a snack basket to operate, so you might have to eat the Tic Tacs out of your purse. Here, I'll give you more water.
Well, you know what, I don't even have a purse.
You can eat the Tic Tacs out of my purse, how about that?
The lid out of my pocket.
I'll share my lunch if I need to.
So one of the, the federal funds that was withheld this July was for teacher professional development. And then with our fund balance going into, without dipping into our reserves, we have canceled all professional developments for teachers. That would, that are above and beyond what are mandated and offered by the district. So, um, keeping that in mind, we have, we have every year gone to WASTA. And if we, just, if we desire to go. It is a significant cost to go and, um, new board members are required to at least attend the OPMA training that's offered every year and we will have, um, at least, we'll have one, I don't, just depending, we will have, we have, there's a possibility of having two board members who have already been on the board. And then there's, we'll have one that's new for sure, and then our student board reps generally go as well. So as board members, uh, um, especially John and, and Steve Norberg, who you guys will still for sure be on the board this, after, um, the election. What, what are your feelings about attending WASTA? And, um, about having, uh, I know that in the past it has been a practice that even if you're an outgoing board member, that you still have the opportunity to go. So Amy and Steve, what are your feelings about that?
I have no problem not going.
Yeah, me either.
So.
If it saves money and shows the family.
I have no problem, I absolutely think the board needs to continue to go, that's my opinion. So I have no problem not going, but we do need to do a placeholder for where's up for election this year. Is that just you and I and Amanda?
Yeah.
Amanda's only the one. I mean, this is my opinion, if you get on, you go, if you don't, then somebody else does, unless you're doing a presentation or something. But even then, I don't think we have to pay for the whole thing. I think ideally we'd be paying for one board member there. I don't know if somebody's coming in to make a, a presentation that we'd have to pay. So we can, I guess you can figure that out later, depending on whether or not, whether or not you get, you get on. So that's my opinion with that. But, but at this time, these, it's these times that those can really help as there will be a lot of things on how to cut budgets, there'll be a lot of things on how to make budget cuts away from students. And I think there's a lot to be learned there.
I, I won't be going because I'll be out of town.
That's true.
I don't know, it's. I, I have mixed feelings about it, I guess. To me, I want to save money at the same time, but I do think there are things that we can do and learn and it would be good for us to participate in, so it's.
Is it, is that all, do they record any of that, that they do up there at all?
No, they, they, they offered it virtually during COVID, but now everything is in person.
But it was highly ineffective virtually. I attended it, I tried to go to all the things, it, I just didn't get half as much out of it as when I did when I was there in person. I, I don't, I know we're on a budget crunch, but I, I feel like that's, I feel like it's shaped me as a board member to help me to know what to do best. And we know successful boards make successful districts. And so I, I, I don't, I mean, I guess you guys can do what you want, I do think it's critical. And I have no problem not going because I will no longer be on the board.
I do know they offer a lot of training, other than.
Well, the, the, any new members should absolutely go.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I've gone every single year I've been on the board and there has never been a year that wasn't.
But have you guys ever been in a situation, financial situation that you know?
But I'm, I still wouldn't be prepared. We've made a lot of cuts as a board and, and I think that this is not one that should be negotiable unless it gets to the point where, I mean, it's impossible, but we're not there yet.
I attended the law conference last year and I used that information countless amounts of times during the last year and that was so informative. I attended a lot of breakout sessions about being board chair, which is also very useful. I, my vote is that I feel like it's, it's a really great opportunity to go and, and learn and collaborate, make connections. And I, even if I couldn't go to the main conference, I would just go to the law conference again and come back. I just, I just found that so informational and so relevant. So, um, I do, I, I would want to go. I think every year our board, our student board reps have had, that's, that's, if there's one thing that I hear them talk about when they, when they leave after the year, it's the WASTA conference and the lunch conference that they, um, really enjoyed making connections with other student reps and getting ideas to bring back to the board. And so I think it's a really good experience for our students and I don't want to take that away from them.
Is it paid per board member?
Yes.
So we have, will, because of budget cuts, we will be flying, we would be driving and carpooling and.
Maybe that's something that could happen, but because you can, I have looked into that, you can put three board members into a car. You do have to be really cautious about what you talk about. We have done it before, but it is, it is permissible. We cannot talk about, we talk about your families and your vacation. We cannot talk about and make decisions about things on the board or, or have anything that even means that way.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, that's a tight line to cross, but maybe, I don't know, maybe it would be cheaper to get a bus and to take everyone across the pass rather than, rather than a plane. And so that we cut those transportation costs, we can cut maybe the dinner out before dinner or cut the cost, at least cut the cost on that and go to a place that's.
Because we still get our per diem as well when we go to the dinner.
Yes, so I think there are some things, cuts that can be made so that we, that, and then, and then make sure we go to the, the, the sessions, you know, make sure that we turn those sessions.
We could go to dinner and we could all pay our own bill.
Happy to drive over there without, anyway, what?
We could go to dinner and all pay our own bill. Yeah.
As part of your per diem, that's, that's great. Yeah, that's a great idea. These are all good things, good ways to cut, make cuts that, you know, it'll be a huge cut to have not have returned. Board members that are not returning to not go, that probably should be policy anyway unless they're presenting. And even then, they just can come to the presenting part.
So it's mileage or airfare, this year will be mileage, hotel stay, conference fees and per diem rates for meals. And that, it does add up.
And where is it at this year?
It's in Seattle. So usually it's been a, it's been the practice that we always fly because it, it's a bad time of year to be going over the pass, but there's just not the budget to consider that this year. Could, is that an option to, is there a district vehicle that we could all pile in?
The chaperones take the kids in one of the district vehicles, but there may be other ones that we can think about. Like there's a little small bus type. And we could be early in the morning or in the night.
Would we have to pay a driver or is there, are there teachers who are?
I think if we're all adults in the vehicle, we can just drive ourselves.
Okay, it's not like a big bus or something that you needed?
No, it's like a little van, it's like a little bigger than a van.
Okay.
I think we'll, we'll drive us around one time, like the, calling the delegation, so. We would just, if, if the kids are in it, the person driving it has to have a type two. So we would probably send the kids in a separate vehicle.
Sometimes there's somebody who does have a type two can drive. Sometimes one of the board members gets a type two and has half the capacity.
Yeah, we can all go together. Yeah, we can figure it out.
Okay.
It's not ideal, but it's, it is.
I would think like.
I don't like driving in Seattle, but I do.
You do have a type two?
I have a, basically a.
You could be a bus driver for us, right? One of the things some districts do, and I'm not necessarily recommending this, especially with this next year being Seattle, but they go, they go every other year when it's in Spokane. So if, if we're in a situation longer term, then that is another strategy, people go every other year. Like for us, because we're a decided state.
It's going to make sure we have a place to park it. Doesn't fit in the, I don't know how big we're talking about.
Well, and the WASTA's at a different, um, hotel this year, like, I don't.
What's that?
It's not in Bellevue.
It's not in Bellevue, so.
Oh, really?
No, yeah, they outgrew that space, they're in a different. No, yeah, they outgrew that space, so they're in a different, so I'm not sure even where it is.
Okay. So it sounds like of the, the two of you that will still be on the board for sure, one of you wants to go, and then two that won't be that are okay with not going, and then I would like to go if re-elected.
So it sounds like plan on travel, make every effort to cut costs by being cognizant about per diem, using combined transportation.
If you're not re-elected, do you go home to the not going?
Absolutely. I don't see the reason for me to go if I'm not re-elected.
Okay. Well, I think we have clarity.
Okay. Do we want to have a quick conversation about Ledge Conference, too, since we're talking about travel? I was okay with not going this year, and since it's a short session in the Ledge, I don't, I don't see.
It's not effective, the event's not effective at all.
And we can all, I think, let's, last year, we all said we could reach out to our, our elected officials. We didn't do that as board, but we have a plan now, it's one of our goals to do that. So I think that would, that would be much more effective in attending the Ledge Conference. I think it's good for the students to go.
To the conference or just go at some point?
At some point. If it's feasible.
If budget allowing.
If budget allowing.
Here's what I'll tell you, the actual Ledge Conference, the weather is terrible.
Oh, yeah. January, February, yeah, sucks.
You know, we have the flexibility to decide kind of when we take the kids, that the weather's a little better.
And all the work that they're doing at that conference should be, should be done in the spring and summer and early fall, not, not during session. When it's session, it's too late. It's too late.
Okay. Sounds like we're in consensus to not go, but have the students maybe not attend, have some, yeah.
I think the kids liked, I mean, you took them to a Ledge just for the day, held them back, they had a good time, they got to do things, like the governor's mansion.
Yeah, do it, do it in the spring, do it.
You know, they'll, you know, if we do this, where the legislator or legislators come in October, they'll have the opportunity to talk to legislators, and then you can do something in order to deal with them, when it's safer for us to travel with them. I have.
More weather on the side.
Yeah, the weather is terrible.
Okay.
Jenny has run to go get pizza and salad.
Okay.
Because wherever we cater, we just have a kitchen.
All right, we will adjourn our study session. Please join us for our regular board meeting at six thirty.